Hello and welcome to the Monday, September 29, 2025 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 16, 2025 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Eckert, if you could please take role.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Lennybeater.
Here.
Mr. Lee. Ms. Nurse.
Here.
Ms. Stats.
Here.
Ms. Traheo.
Here.
And Mr. Marini.
Here, we have a quorum. I'll take a motion to move into executive session where as the Oklahoma Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975 provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7b of the act. Resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough, the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are legal matters and employee matters. The matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in the favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back around 7:30. Thank you.
We are now back from executive session. Ms. Record, if we could please take role.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Laningbeater.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Ms. Nurse.
Here.
Ms. Stats.
Here.
Ms. Traheo.
Here.
And Mr. Maruni.
Here, we have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
I would like to acknowledge the correspondence is listed. For Board President's report, I don't think we have anything for today, so we'll move on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my Superintendent's report, there are three parts, two that have presentations, but the first part does not. I'm going to kick it over to Dr. Lisa Rabimbas, who has a recognition for us.
Good evening, everyone. As we end the month of September, I would like to take a moment to remind us all of the beauty of each and every student who comprises the intricate tapestry that makes up Hillsborough Township Public Schools. Our schools are composed of students who come to us from various cultural backgrounds and heritages. Throughout this year, we will take the time to recognize some of those heritages and cultures. Unfortunately, we will not be able to recognize them all, but we've asked the staff to recognize those that belong to the students they serve in a respectful and meaningful way that connects to the New Jersey learning standards and the district curriculum. With this in mind, from September 15th to October 15th, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, El Mes de la Herencia Hispana, to recognize the achievements and contributions of Hispanic-American champions who have inspired others to achieve success. This is a time to remember that here at Hillsborough, 14% of the students identify as Hispanic or Latino. As a reminder as well, the observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to over a 30-day period. It was enacted into law August 17th, 1988. This year's theme is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. Understanding cultures and heritages provides a mirror where students and staff may see themselves. It also provides a window that opens a collective, individual, and universal understanding and appreciation for each other through experiences with each other's culture, heritage, food, art, music, literature, and family traditions. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, I shared some of my favorite pieces with the district staff, and I asked them to share theirs. If you so choose, I hope you take a moment to experience some of the unique specialties that make Hispanic and Latino heritage special. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rabimbas. The second part of my Superintendent's report today has to do with something that I've been speaking about for about a year and a half now, and it's been creeping ever closer with more and more information. And although it's not finished, and there's still a lot of work to do, today we will be providing the most detailed information and in-depth information we have today about our redistricting efforts as well as full-day kindergarten implementation for the 2026-27 school year. As I've said before, while of course it is a team effort and everybody is working on this, Mr. Joel Handler has taken the bull by the horns and spearheaded this initiative, and he has a presentation for the public here in Hillsborough this evening as to where we are, where we're going, and what next steps may be. And Joel, I will put the presentation up there, and you can just tell me when to advance the slide.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, so tonight, we're going to talk about basically the two goals. If you want to go to the second slide, that'd be great. That Mr. Volpe talked about, which one? One is completing the redistricting process for the elementary level with the goal of communicating that to parents before the end of this school year. And then the second goal is completing the planning for implementing a full-day kindergarten for the 26-27 school year. Both of these goals are very intertwined and interconnected and, you know, intrinsically linked. Redistricting process increases, balances our class sizes so that we can have space for full-day K. We are also running into several issues where some of our schools currently are very overcrowded, while there are several schools that are undercatted. We can use that word there. So if you can go to the next slide. So I want to show you this slide very particularly. This is a demographic layout, demographic is a word, more of a population density layout of Hillsborough. And this was very eye-opening for me, and for everyone I've been showing it to, they were like, wow. So it highlights the core issue we really have in Hillsborough in terms of population density. Our current elementary density across the town is unbalanced across six elementary schools. So each of those red dots represents one of our elementary schools, and I'll kind of talk a little bit about it. For me, I know right away where they all are, but for those who aren't too familiar with the township layout, I may not realize. So the high-density areas can be seen in the lower right corner. So every blue dot represents a current K4 student of ours. So the blue, so if you look in the bottom right corner, which is the southeast side of town, those two red dots, they represent Amsterdam Elementary School and Woods Road Elementary School. Then, when you go to the center of town, you'll see two red dots kind of in the middle of the map, a little bit to the right, but in the middle. That's your, that is Triangle Elementary School and Hillsborough Elementary School. And again, very densely populated areas, schools are right there. You go to the upper right corner, that's Sunnymead Elementary School. And though the map does not reflect it well, those blue areas are very densely populated. So again, right where the densely populated areas are, you have a school. And then you go out to the Woodford Elementary School, all the way to the left of the map. It's all the way nearing the border of Hillsborough. When you look at it, Woodford Elementary School covers about a third to almost half of Hillsborough's land, but is about a tenth, possibly even less, of our elementary school population. So it kind of gives you an idea of, you know, transporting school students around town and where students live. It gives you an idea of that. So it's something we have to take into account when we look at redistricting and balancing our schools. So, but before we look at any redistricting, we wanted to make sure we take into account any future construction that's coming up. We also wanted to take into account looking at any historical population changes that could be happening in our district. So if you can go to the next slide. So last year, the board had contracted with Arc Bridge to provide redistricting planning for the town. They looked at a comprehensive demographic study and looked at enrollment projections, determining building capacity and utilization. I'm going to go into some of these numbers in the next slide, so we can switch. So as part of that study, they kind of gave us a new development projection for the town. And based at the time they did it, it showed kind of all the current and just completed projects that are happening in Hillsborough. Some haven't started yet, some had just completed, and some were under construction. So when we look at this, four of those developments were already just completed. So one of the things we did right away was look at, they projected from those new developments, we would probably get about 66 students. Well, the good news is that was last year, they projected that. This year, we're able to look at our numbers, it's actually about 71 students. So their projection seemed pretty on with those four developments. Looking at this further, though, they're actually projecting total with those developments, we'd get about 309 total students over the course of these project, these project, these construction projects, you know, coming forward. So, the next slide. So now, this slide just shows you where those new project, those new construction projects are happening in the town. You'll see the kind of orangey color are where single-family homes are versus the green dots are where multifamily homes are occurring. That's just important to distinguish because obviously you're That's just important to distinguish because obviously if it's a multifamily dwelling, you'll have multiple families in the same area of land, which means more children for the schools potentially. So if you go to the next slide, this one actually highlights even more so the density conundrum we're in a little bit in Hillsborough in that. If, and if you kind of in your mind lay the two over each other, you can see a lot of the construction is happening in what's currently considered Amsterdam School, currently considered Sunnymead, and then a little bit in Triangle, a little bit in HES. So it gives you an idea, so if you can move on there. So looking at the future construction of what hasn't been done yet, Arc Bridge has projected will get about another 243 students over the next year or two with these constructions. And very specifically, if you look, based on the type of housing that's being built, they're projecting Amsterdam School to get a 68 additional students, and Sunnymead School to get 106 students. For those who aren't aware, Sunnymead School right now is actually at capacity, slightly even overcapacity in some sense. So that's a problem for us, right? We need to address that very quickly. So before we get into the redistricting, the other thing we have to look at is not just who's coming into town, but what is our historical trends been? And that's actually an eye-opener. A lot of us have been saying, oh, we're growing, we're growing, we're growing. But when we actually look at the numbers, our general ed population, I'm very specific about saying general education, we're going to talk about why in a second, but our general education for students in grades one through four, and I'm specifically leading off kindergarten because our current kindergarten program is only a half-day program. We suspect we cannot use our kindergarten numbers to predict next year's kindergarten numbers because when it's full day, there are some families who will send their child to a full-day private kindergarten because we don't offer that. So we have to think that in our mind. So we looked at grades one through four, and what has our population done over the past, in this case, 14 years, we were able to look back. And as you can see, we were pretty flat, kind of fluctuating a little bit until about the 18, 19 school year. And then that year was our peak, where we went a little over 220, 2,200 students. We broke that number. But ever since that year, and every year since, we've gone down in terms of general ed, grades one through four student population. It's important to keep in mind. So that on itself looks like, oh, problem solved. Number of students are going down. We have more students coming into the town based on new construction. Shouldn't be much of an issue. If you go to the next slide now. When we look at special ed self-contained, that population is increasing. So over the past couple of years, it kept going up. And why this is important to note is the room utilization by special ed is completely different than the general education classroom. So in general education, in kindergarten, grades one, we can go up to 22 students in that classroom. In grade two, we might have up to 25 students in a classroom. In grades three and four, we will have up to 27 students in our classrooms. When it goes to special ed, the average special ed classroom size is for the self-contained special ed is about seven to eight students, depending on the program. Some programs, like our autism programs, can, by code, cannot have no more than six students in them. And then some of our other LLD and other self-contained programs may go up to eight or 10, 11 students. So when you look at populations in terms of room utilization, as special ed students come into the district, their use of classrooms significantly increases compared to the amount of rooms we are quote-unquote "losing," that's not the right word, but from a population decrease. So taking all that into account, we looked at our district, our six schools, our density populations, you know, where our growth is coming and going, and developed three plans. One was the idea of taking Hillsborough Elementary School and Triangle Elementary School being center school towns and seeing, is there any advantage to that in terms of transportation costs, in terms of educational program that we can use to our advantage? So Plan One is what we've kind of been talking about, the idea of redistricting. We're going to keep six local elementary schools, each one serving a local population within the boundaries of that school. Plan Two was to look into developing an early childhood center, specifically at Triangle Elementary School, and I'll talk about why in a minute. Early childhood centers, there's a lot of advantage in them, a lot of districts have gone in that direction, and that would involve taking our pre-K and all kindergarten, all going to that one school. We'll talk about that in a minute. The third plan we looked at was, we have that central school, Hillsborough Elementary, that's actually our largest elementary school. Could that serve as a central program for our fourth grade? So those were the three scenarios we kind of looked at, and I'll go through each one of them now. So in Plan One, that redistricting, basically, we had two things we were looking at here very specifically. One was increasing Woodford's utilization. We talked about earlier the population there. The amount of students going to that school, it's very underpopulated. We're not using it to its fullest extent. At the same time, when we look at the other side of town, we see that Amsterdam and Sunnymead are very crowded. Sunnymead specifically overcrowded, and in the next few years, both those schools will grow tremendously. So we looked at trying to adjust the borders, working closely with transportation, working closely with special ed and all the, those involved in the committee to see how we can adjust that. This is not finalized, but it's kind of where we're leaning towards in terms of if we stick with six K4 schools. Plan Two is to develop an early childhood learning center for our youngest learners. So Triangle happens to be the school that has actually the most number of bathrooms in the classrooms. Why is that important? State mandate requires that elementary school, kindergarten specifically, must have a bathroom either in the classroom or bathroom, we can potentially get waivers from the county that if there's a bathroom within line of sight somewhere nearby those rooms, that classroom, it can potentially be used. And we do that in a few cases already in some of our schools. But going to the idea of an early childhood center, you know, Triangle, we would need, we wouldn't need to do any construction in any of our other schools for bathrooms. Triangle has a lot of bathrooms, and when you look at that building, depending on if we can get waivers or not, pretty much every single room in that building could be within line of sight of a bathroom or has a bathroom already in place. So construction costs, looking at that, may be lower. We're also, we looked at transportation. The original concept was, oh, those are center schools. Could we save on transportation costs because now you kind of minimize routing? That was not achieved. Basically, we were going to potentially have one or two extra bus routes. This having Triangle be a centerized school for the early childhood learning center wasn't a major cost, but also not a major savings. It does maximize Triangle in a way that it maximizes it to the full extent. And if you go to the next slide, I'll explain what I mean by that. So this is where we have to kind of do a little guesstimation. We don't know how many kindergartner students we'll have next year. We can only go by what our current populations are and what populations are telling us. Looking at our current population of first grade this year, general ed students, we have 392 students. So assuming we have that again next year for our kindergarten. Again, we can't go by kindergarten numbers because kindergarten numbers don't really reflect who's really coming to our schools next year because some families do choose to send them to private full-day K. We know that. So assuming we were to have the same number of kindergarten students, we max out the building. That is, every classroom is used, you know, including bringing the pre-K programs over to the Triangle School as an early childhood center. So all that school now becomes a real kind of home for that level of students and becomes, from an education point of view, a great advantage. But from a housing point of view or room capacity point of view, we would be maxing out the school, which does not leave us room to grow, and that could be a possibility in the future. We did talk about, well, would there be overflow schools? Would we do other things with that? But that's kind of where we left it at this point and kind of representing, and kind of presenting to the public and to the board. One thing to note, too, it would require us to, going back to putting kindergartners in the modular classrooms that are at that school. Those modular classrooms are getting replaced. That is part of the current budget. So honestly, they'll probably be some of the nicest classrooms next year because they'll be brand-new. But, and I do want to note that when those were actually originally constructed, they were used for kindergarten at one point. So that was Plan Two. Plan Three was to develop a fourth-grade transition school at HES. One person, one might ask, well, why didn't you use HES for an early childhood center? It's actually our biggest elementary school by about four classrooms. So it actually makes a lot of sense, and we wouldn't have this problem. The big issue with HES in terms of an early childhood center is bathrooms. They currently only have three classrooms, large-size classrooms that have a bathroom. And on top of that, the rest of the way the building's constructed, they don't even have classrooms that would pass a waiver to be within line of sight. So that, we could not use that as an early childhood center. So we did look at it, though, as a fourth-grade transition school. The idea would be, you know, we would reduce costs because we're going to have to do something there about bathrooms, for sure, because they don't have enough, and it would be essential for busing. So when we looked at it, though, some of the things we found was that, first of all, it's not educationally the most conducive for students. An early childhood center, you know, for a kindergarten pre-K makes a lot of sense because you can develop a program that's very geared specifically for that level of student. And when we looked at a fourth-grade-only school, we saw a lot of transition. We said, well, you got students now going from a K3 school, going to a fourth-grade school for one year, which is great for an educational program for them, but then immediately going to another school for a five, six, and then going to another school for a seven, eight, and then going to a high school where they can, they'll be for a while. So we thought that might be a lot of transitions. It didn't yield the anticipated busing costs savings that we thought might happen. And it did also introduce some complications with special ed, and specifically at that grade level. So that kind of wraps up where we are right now in terms of our planning and researching for different alternatives and how to redistrict. We've had several community inputs over the past couple of years, as you can see up there. Discussions were held on the March 10th meeting. We've had multiple social media posts about what we've been doing, as well as our Hillsborough happenings. Every week you do kind of, or every other week, we do put updates in there as well. If you aren't subscribed to Hillsborough Happenings, it is on our website. If you go to the website, go under Community, you'll see it there. So if you are not subscribed, we do recommend that you subscribe. You don't have to have children in the district to subscribe to that newsletter. Lots of good information. We are planning on holding several in-person opportunities for discussion about these plans, kind of moving forward and getting more feedback from the community. One will be on October 16th from 9:00 to 11:00. The next will be November 13th. We'll do one during the day from 1:00 to 3:00. And again, on November 13th from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The locations will be forthcoming. So, and then of course, at any board meeting, we do invite the public to come up and to talk about any of the redistricting progress we've made and the plans we're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Handler. That involves a lot of work. It's still going to involve a lot of work. Our goal for all students and parents is right around spring break time, either right before or right after. We want to let everybody know where they're going to be going for school for next year. And to make that clear, for anybody who will be registering for full-day K, which registration starts in January, towards the end of January, we're not going to be able to tell you which school you're going to at that time. So we have a lot more work to do. We have a lot of conceptual plans. Mr. Handler's going to be involved in other presentations to the public, but we are happy that we were able to provide you this information at this time. And anytime we do have a presentation like this, we will be, within the next couple of days, cutting out a clip of this from YouTube, sharing it out on social media. So if you only want to learn about full-day K and redistricting, you can watch a shorter video rather than scrolling through the entire board meeting. It's very conceptual right now, but does anybody have any questions of Mr. Handler, Dr. Rabimbas, or myself? Yes, misters.
I do. Two out of the three options that are being explored involve transitional buildings, whether, you know, it's an early childhood center or the fourth-grade transition. Was there a time, and if so, why was it removed, that we looked at an early learning center such as pre-K to one, or pre-K to two, and then two to four or three to four? Was it the least cost-effective or?
We, when we looked at the concept of perhaps sister schools, one of the things that we ran into right away was transportation costs went much higher than we had anticipated, and there were also some other logistical challenges, too. So that kind of got moved to the wayside very, very early on, I think last year when we started looking at this. But what we still wanted to do is we wanted to come to the board as well as the community with options, that we didn't just want to say, okay, we ruled out one option, so there's no other options. We have to go there. We really started brainstorming and came up with these other three options. We have discussed these in an administrative committee. One of them tends to be the most popular, one's a little bit popular, and one of them, people are like, I don't like that option. But the sister schools got ruled out for cost reasons and logistical reasons very early on. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we can't take questions from the, I see some people raising their hands. You can come up at public comment and make something a little bit later. And then we will have in-person opportunities where you can meet with administration, where we'll be happy to sit down with you and answer any questions for as long as you want about full-day K and redistricting. So we invite you to that. Thank you, everybody.
That would be during the second public comment period.
During the second public comment period, yes, thank you. Okay, so on to the last part of my Superintendent's report. One of the things that really gets going in October is the creation of our budget for the next year. So that would be the 26-27 budget. What we want to try to do during the course of this year is try to get out as much information to people as we possibly can. Sometimes information is talked about with board members and administrators behind the scenes, and we just want to give everybody an insight as to all the options we're looking at. Similarly, as we're looking at options when it comes to full-day K and redistricting, we're looking at multiple options with our budget. In general, generally speaking, Mr. Ecker and I will approach the Operations Committee of the Board and talk about parameters. And what are parameters? Parameters are how comfortable is, do the board members feel in going up a certain percentage of the budget? Most of the time in the state of New Jersey over the past however many years, it's been at a 2% cap, sometimes with a health benefit, it's waiver. So we'll come to that committee meeting and say, how high can we go? And then, starting after that, starting in October, there's many months of work where we put together a budget. Then in the spring, the board votes on the budget. So the board then has to look at a tentative budget, approve that, and then a final budget. We don't have the actual dates for those meetings yet because we don't have our 2026 meetings designated yet, but the board will vote at some point. But we are just at that point where we are starting to talk about parameters. I want to make it very clear, and I highlighted it on the presentation behind me, there is no budget vote taking place at this time. Board members can speak about things if they want to, but they don't have to. But one of the things that we wanted to look at, especially with the tax levy incentive option that took place last year, was what do different scenarios and different parameters look like? The board can ask me for my opinions and recommendations, but in the end, the board has to approve some kind of a budget within approved parameters. So what I'm going to be showing here is what a 26-27 budget, very high-level, very conceptually, not with specifics, with rounded numbers, would look like with a 0% addition to the tax, increase to the tax levy, a 1% increase to the tax levy, a 2% increase to the tax levy, and a 2% increase plus the healthcare waiver. Again, these numbers are rounded and conceptual, and if anybody asks questions like, well, what about 1.45%? We're not going to be running those numbers at the table tonight. If you have those types of questions, we can answer those in committee, run them, and certainly report out. But I wanted to show the public as well as the board options that we are looking at. And I want to remind everybody of something behind me as well. Last year, when we, the board passed the tax levy incentive option and raised the taxes higher than it had before, the first $4.5 million of that tax levy incentive adjustment went towards putting back the things in the budget that I was eliminating in my Superintendent's budget for the tentative budget. So that included staffing, that's all listed behind me. That included a whole lot of other things like school supplies, courtesy busing, not getting rid of the pay-to-play, rekeying efforts for school safety, $4.5 million. 4.5 million dollars of that raised money immediately went to that. So I want to make it very clear that having that option prevented those cuts, and all of those positions, even if some of them have been transferred to another position, uh, they're with us today, and all of those efforts under those other items, uh, they were in part of this year's budget. So it's important to remember that fact first. And then I'll ask you to just uh bear with me as I try to explain the next couple of slides and what things would look like. Because what I want everybody to look at are the, the big buckets, and then also what things might look like the following year. So if you could just follow me down the table behind me, and again, these numbers are rounded. After last year's budget was passed, there was about a 26.6 million dollars added to the tax, uh, tax levy as compared to 25, uh, as compared to the previous year. Then if you follow me down to the next one, immediately 4.5 million of that was put into a lot of recurring costs. Um, and that number so is now down to about 22 million, uh, 100,000. Again, very rounded. This is the possibility with a 0% tax levy increase. So the green number there shows zero, nothing else is being added. Here's what I have to plan for as superintendent and then advise the board. Some very big ticket items there. Hillsborough, and I think everybody's aware, has been a victim of state aid cuts for many, many years. I have to plan for that. And every time I plan for it and think I plan big, it ends up becoming much bigger. Last year it was capped, or it would have been much bigger. So into my very early budget, could be more, could be less. I'm hoping it's less. I'm saying, okay, the state, maybe they're going to come and take 2 million more in state aid from us this year. They shouldn't, but I don't put anything past the, the state aid formula and how things can sometimes be moved around. I also have to plan for a health benefits increase. So right now in September, this is the final budget, off the top of my head, I'm saying, okay, if we got a 20% increase in health benefits, I've got to find 5 million dollars in my budget to cover that health benefit increase. I then have to make sure all of my employees get their raises for the next year. Again, this isn't exact, if anybody from the HEA is out there with the contract, I know this isn't exact, but I'm putting about 3 million dollars, it's ballpark rate about there. We can get that exact number eventually. Then we have some general cost increases. Inflation goes up, things cost more, energy costs more, some things simply cost more, and I'm putting that at about a million dollars. Mr. Zabiga has said, Mike, that's too low. Well, I'm hoping some of them come in lower and it kind of balances out. But just based on that, just by us existing, I have to find about 11 million dollars in our budget to cover all of those costs. And I haven't. Last year we tried to, as the, the board, to right the ship. I, I have that money. One of the things as a priority for the board is they also want to implement full day kindergarten for the fall of 26, 27. Again, I don't have this 100% accurate, um, but I'm thinking it's going to take about 17 new staff members as a recurring cost, about 17 new staff members to fully implement full day kindergarten across all six of our schools or potentially at one school. Um, but it's going to be about 17 staff members, about 1.95 million. That means I've got to find about 12.95 million moving forward, not just this year. Because every year moving forward, I'm going to have those kindergarten teachers. It's not going to be a one-time thing. We have full day kindergarten for one year and then goodbye. Every year, I'm going to have to plan for a state aid, uh, state aid cut. I hope that changes at some point. Every year I'm going to have to plan for a health benefits increase. Every year I'm going to have to plan to pay my employees more. And every year, the costs of things go up. Again, these are general ballpark numbers. So moving forward, in my budget each and every year, I'm going to have to find about 12.95 million dollars in order to keep us moving forward afloat and not have to cut anything. And I have those two red arrows there. It's important for you to wa, match up those red arrows. So if the board wanted to have a 0% tax increase uh for, for going into next year, I could eat it. I, we could eat it, it's not a million is left in non-recurring cost projects, fixing roofs, all of those kinds of one, one-off things in this year's budget, there's about 9.1 million dollars. That's how much is left out of that 26.6 million. But I've said that each year I'm going to be carrying an additional 12.9 million dollars in my budget. So at the 0% tax increase, 26, 27, we're fine. 27, 28, before we start the budget, we are 3.8 million dollars in the hole. So what has happened in Hillsborough over time is we have been in survival mode year to year, because we don't know about the state aid cuts, we don't know what's coming. I can be a little bit more strategic now and show these numbers. That a 0% tax increase could be eaten for the 26, 27 budget, but then in 27, 28, we're starting 3.8 million dollars in the hole, granted, before we decide what to do with the budget, but we're starting in a hole. And one of the things, I thought this picture was kind of funny, maybe some people don't. On the left-hand side, you got people who just are patting down that, that hole. They just refilled a hole. And I feel that in looking at this as superintendent, um, that's something that this board did last year, was they filled that gap uh that was here for so long because of the state aid cuts, because of the 2% cap, and because of what boards did many years ago. There was a long time ago that boards sitting right here where these board members are today did not go to cap, and that has hurt us and haunted us for a long period of time. There's multiple factors. So what I would hate to do is have this board have filled in the hole, and then if we go to 0%, okay, that next year, just start digging that hole all over again. Following that same pattern that I showed you, and I'm not, I'm going to go through this slide a little bit more quickly because you understand it. At the top again, showing the tax levy increase, how much we carried over, but this time at a 1%, we would bring in about 1.44 million dollars. You know what I thought all the costs were, you know how I lined this up. Now what you see by going to 1% is those two numbers by the arrows get a little bit closer. Again, in 26, 27, no problem. At 1%, going only to 1% this year, we start in 27, 28, just under a million dollars in the hole, again, before we start that budget. So we dig that hole just a little bit. When it comes to 2%, 2% would be about 2.8 million dollars, and now you can see that those two arrow numbers have flipped. At 2%, starting in 27, 28, for the first time, I think, oh, Jerry, you and I haven't been here that many years, but for the first time in a long time, at 2%, Hillsborough starts in the good before we develop the budget. It would be the first time in a long time where Hillsborough doesn't start by saying, what are we cutting? And that's at 2%. Last year sticker shock for everybody who is a Hillsborough resident, I get it. Looking at the long term of this, that's not something we need to do again. And I'll show you what it looks like with 2% plus the health benefits waiver. Again, this is approximate, we don't have our health benefits numbers, we looked at what the health benefits number was last year, and we're making some estimates. If the board decided to go with the 2% increase and the health benefits waiver, that'd be adding about 5.2 million dollars to the tax levy, and then heading into 27, 28, you're actually 6.6 million dollars ahead. And with where we were with last year's budget and the tax increases, I don't think that's necessary. Um, it's an option obviously in front of the board, the, the healthcare waiver, but I don't think we need to be 6.6 million dollars ahead of the game. I would think that going to the 2% uh might be very logical, because I don't want history to repeat itself in Hillsborough, where we didn't go to the cap and then a new state aid formula comes in, and then we're in trouble and trying to figure things out year after year after year. The reason why I show you all of this, uh, both the board members and the public, these aren't hard numbers, they're approximate, but they show you the different options that the board can look at, that administration can look at, once the board gives us direction what they're comfortable with, and we can move on from there. So to give you the, the, the large general next steps, board and administration, we're going to have continued committee level discussions, we can continue to talk about this in public. And what I'm going to do, similar to the redistricting and full day K uh video snippets, I'm going to do the same thing anytime I talk about the budget. Anytime there's a presentation on the budget, I'm going to snip it out, put it out on social media, put it in Hillsborough Happening. So if you just care about the budget and want to watch that 10 minutes, you can watch that 10 minutes. Our budget process really starts in October. That's why on October 1st, in both Hillsborough Happenings and on our website, we're going to put out a form for public feedback, that anybody could tell us their thoughts about things they would like to see included or eliminated from the budget as we move forward. On October 13th board meeting, the next board meeting that we have, uh, budget input is going to be added to all public comment at the board meetings. And then if you want to keep this in mind, is sometime in the middle of March, we'll have the tentative budget presentation, and then the final budget presentation will be the last week in April. And I want to make it very clear to the board members here, so you're not feeling any pressure. This is informational, you do not have to come to any type of consensus as to what option you are picking, but I think it's important that the board and myself show the community that we're looking at all these types of options. But in addition to looking at all these types of options, what are the long-term uh positive and negative consequences of whatever we would take? So that's my uh budget presentation as far as it comes uh to parameters, and uh you'll hear more budget information uh from future superintendent's reports, and of course, board members, we will continue to discuss that as well. Yes?
I have a question about, so first of all, thank you so much for creating this. It's very, very helpful to see the implications of a zero and all those different things. Um, but if you, we go to the one right before this, the one with 2% and taking the health benefits waiver, the conclusion that I come to, and I don't know if this is correct, so I'm going to ask, is that 26.6 million dollars that we raised doesn't last very long?
Well, I think it depends on, it depends on what we do with it. It depends on what we do with it. So one of the things that I had tried to, to commit to do, um, it could, we could have blown through it in one year. If I hired, and I'm not, you know, it's always good to have more teachers, and I don't want to make it clear, but if I hired all new staff members within one year, I'm just making a hire 100 staff members, 150 staff members, then in one year, we're, we're in trouble. Uh, it, we need to take a look at a lot of things moving forward, um, including things like health benefits, including things like continued advocacy when it comes to, to the state aid uh situation, because what this assumes, Jean, and this may be the, the flaw in this, the, the red items that I have as costs, I assume that those are going to be the continued costs every year. So my hope would be that within two years, we could get better healthcare insurance uh for, for cheaper, that we can not have a 2 million dollar state aid cut. 26 million goes fast if you don't look for good options and how you spend it.
Right, but I think what, what you're showing here with the, in the red, is that, so going back to the 0%, it's basically, it's every year, our costs increased by 11 million dollars. And the reason it's decreasing is because we're taking that 2% plus the health waiver. But the actual cost of being Hillsborough is 11 million dollars. So that to me is like, that's a big problem, because I don't, like the 26, right, we said the 26.6 million, I was against it, but okay, it's passed. It looks like based on this, it's going, we're going to be raising taxes again at some point.
Well, I think what I'm trying to show here is I think that if we went to zero, I think that's, that's a, a pretty significant problem. I do. Um, I think if we looked at the 2%, I think we're on a good path and we're starting to stabilize. And honestly, yeah, we have to do things, like we have to at some point shop around our health insurance, we have to try to find the best deal on everything that we can. Um, I don't want to send everybody into a state of panic with this, because please remember, all those red numbers that I put right there, right now, are estimates. What I would love, and I know this is hope upon hope, you know, what if we didn't get a state aid cut this year? What if that 2 million dollar number I, I had that's coming out of our budget every year disappeared? That's a significant chunk. It is very early to try and make these predictions, but uh depending on how money is spent, how money is used, uh, it can go faster or it can go slower.
Right, but I think my point is even on the 2% increase in health benefits waiver, going into the 20, so not next school year, but the year after, at 6.6 million, like in um
To the good.
To the good, if you minus 11 million, you're still at minus 5 million. So that's
Uh, no, no, I'm, um
Sorry, the year after, right? So like, because like that's, so, no, actually, no, it would be for the 27, 28, because if you're at 6.6 million, you're assuming an 11 million increase to do business, you're already going to be in a 5 million dollar hole in just two years.
Well, again, I think it depends on what the board decides to do, because example, if you did a 0% this year and then a 2% the following year
No, no, I'm saying if, if we do the, what you're suggesting, I mean, not what you're suggesting, but what's shown here, if we take 2% and the health benefits waiver, in 27, 28, we're still going to be 5 million in the hole. Just based on
No, in 20, in 27, 28, you're, you're ahead 6.6 million dollars. You're thinking maybe 28, 29?
No, because, because I'm, I'm looking at the, okay, maybe we'll take it in committee because I
Okay, you know, yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm happy to answer any more detailed questions that we could take there. I think as far as it goes for the community, we want you to know we're looking at options, we want to let you know that there are implications for any of those options, and we will continue to talk about this in committee, and Jean, after we have those committee discussions and uh we have that, we can report back out to the public as well.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate the comparison here.
Thank you. Mr. President
May I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joel.
Um, and I know there, there will be more detailed discussions down the road, but what is a health benefit waiver and why would we not exercise it?
I will tell you why we would not exercise it. The health benefit waiver, Joel, means that, and Jerry, you can explain it, means that we can go through the 2% cap and pass extra tax uh costs on to the taxpayers to make up for a difference in, and you want to explain the difference there, Jerry?
Basically, it's allowed, it's whatever the difference is between the state health benefit plan increase and the 2% tax levy cap. So in the upcoming year, the state health benefit plan is projected to be at least around a 30% increase. Fortunately, we're not in that plan. Um, so if ours comes into like the 20% that Mike has listed on here, we would be able to do a waiver for 18% of that. So for the, for up to the amount of our, of our
So a health benefit waiver allows us to increase taxes even further?
More than, past the 2%?
It's one of the allowable exemptions.
So if we're hoping to not increase taxes, we, then we don't want to exercise a health benefit waiver?
Correct. And, and what, you know, again, it's early in projecting, and there's a lot of things that, moving parts that can change, but based on the numbers that I'm showing, right now, I'm not necessarily seeing the, the need for that within this budget. That is, of course, the board's prerogative uh to, to talk about that further, and we can talk about that further in committee, but the waiver, yes, is an additional uh tax.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that now concludes probably my longest superintendent's report.
Yes, I agree. All right. So I, I will mention, um, A, we have your policies and regulations requiring annual review. For this section, uh, this is not actually something that the board votes on, they're just required annual review, they're available for the public to, to see. Uh, there's a clickable link in the agenda if you look online. We'll now move on to committee reports. All right. So could we start with HR? Ms. Nurse?
Sure. The HR committee meeting, uh, we discussed the sidebar agreement with the HEA. We also talked about a labor settlement um involving the district and the HEA, um, a need for some unbudgeted instructional assistance uh based on uh the uh rise in student needs. And then we finished with a personnel matter.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jackson, if we could review education?
Yep. So we met on September 9th, and we reviewed book adoptions, and revised ASL 1 and 2 curriculum, abolishing policy 1648.15, which is record-keeping for healthcare settings in school buildings, COVID-19. Policy 2422, uh statutory curriculum requirements. Policy 5339.01, student incentive protection. And then um, we did the review 25, 26 district professional development plan and mentoring and mentoring plan statement of assurance. And we reviewed a highly effective option, which focuses on teacher self-assessment and professional growth. And then we had a discussion on the HMS Grade 8 Hershey-Geddeesburg trip update. And then AI in, excuse me, AI use in the district.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, Operations Committee. Kind of speaking of the devil, we spent a lot of time at the last operations meeting talking about health benefits and cost projections and cost increases and what some of the options are. And an option that we spent quite a lot of time discussing were health savings accounts and the long-term benefits that those hold for people who are in God, the staff, people who have that kind of benefit. And there's this kind of paradox that a lot of people are not interested in or afraid of or squeamish about health savings accounts. Oh, it's not the same old, same old, you know, I like my old plan. But everyone who knows about health savings accounts and how they work reports great outcomes. And one of the nice things about health savings accounts is that folks who participate in a health savings account actually can experience long-term benefits that would even extend way beyond their employment here at the district. So that's something, and of course, the various groups need to get on board and decide they're willing to accept that kind of program for their members. But we spent a good amount of time talking about that. One of the items on the agenda tonight is renaming the basketball court, and we'll vote on that later. We had some preliminary discussions about budget planning and some of the things that go into that. And questions did come up at that time about the implications of holding back on increasing taxes, you know? Well, what if we just say, look, enough's enough? We're going to go with 0% for next year just to give people a breather. But besides the implications that Mr. Volpe just pointed out, Mr. Eckert explained that from the state point of view, if we don't increase taxes, if we don't go to the 2% or some intermediate tax increase, we may find ourselves, again, just plodding down the road toward the state deciding that we're not paying our fair share, which in turn turns into cuts in state funding. It does become of a bit of a catch-22. And I don't, that can't be changed until the actual legislation is adjusted in Trenton. We did talk about school facilities related to the all-day kindergarten program and the needs that are required there. And again, a lot of that is statutory. It's not just an indulgence, there are minimum requirements if you're going to have kids of a young age at your school. And that was about it.
All right, thank you. And for governance, we had a lot of varying discussion on proclamations and who and what we're going to cover and who's going to be presenting them at board meetings. So there was a good, thorough conversation there, and that conversation will continue. As Mr. Davis mentioned, he mentioned something about the budget discussion that has resulted in what you've seen today. We had a very thorough conversation on Hazel Health, which is a potential state-funded grant for additional counseling options. We actually got to speak with a representative from Hazel Health in addition to our internal team here. And it was a very good session, I thought, for that. And then we, you know, did some kind of other staff recognition discussions as well. But that was it. Okay. All right. So given that, we will now move on to comments from the board public. We very much welcome him from the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time. At the meetings, we'll be open to public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. Before you state your comment, you'll ask to provide your name and address. There's a thin limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions. Rather, offers opportunity to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public gets a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Call the note the Open Public Meetings Act. The privacy rights of public employees and companies therein do not prevent the board to discuss personal issues in public session. I noticed people had raised some hands before. The first public comment is on items on the action agenda. If there's other questions, say about redistricting or comments, that can be during the second public comment period. There's two comment periods.
Hello, Alicia Gabor-Balas, live in Hillsboro. So basically, anything that's already happened, is that part of the action agenda? Basically?
This is anything that's on the action agenda that's listed on tonight's meeting. So this first public comment is for those items.
Like, so I could talk about Triangle School and like, what you just talked about?
No.
Just going forward?
That'll be the second session, because that's not on the action agenda for tonight. It's stuff that the board is voting on before the board votes.
Okay, um, let's see, so let's see. Just in general, if anyone wanted to abstain or vote no on books, it'd be nice if they could share why. Probably not needed, but not required, but it'd be nice to just hear why. And I guess I'll hold the rest for you later. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Okay, seeing no others, we'll move on to the action agenda. Actually, first, approval of minutes. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes, 9:825. Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll move on to the action.
You abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration and approval of the following motions in the area of education. Professional travel-related expenses. Professional travel-related expenses for board member Jane Stats. Professional travel-related expenses for board member Jean Trujillo. Affirming the HIB determination for the attached cases. Field trip destinations, overnight trips. Statement of assurance for the district professional development plan. Revised ASL 1 and 2 curriculum. Optional activities for highly effective educators. Adopting books. Approving staff for the NJGPA wraparound program. Approving staff for after-school languages extended exploration program. PSAT proctors for October 11th. Affiliation agreement with Teachers College and Columbia University. Amending agenda item 11.8 from August. Accepting the funds for the TCNJ PDSN educator inquiry project grant. Application for funding for optimal comprehensive universal screeners grant to the NJ DOE. Approving the submission of grant application for Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools. And approving long-term suspensions of students whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
Can I get a motion to second?
Second.
Any discussion before the board votes? Ms. Stats?
Regarding item 12.6, motion to approve overnight trips, especially about the middle school overnight trip. We had this concern a year ago. And the same reasons why they promoted this field trip are still existing. Well, we don't want to, you know, they've already gotten the fundraising in motion, et cetera, et cetera. Well, with this reasoning, this will never change. My concern is the cost. It's over $500. It has resulted in about 70%, 71% of the class attending the field trip. So they're not experiencing, it is a lovely, wonderful experience to stay overnight, but it's also the reason why it costs so much. So it keeps about 30% of the kids from experiencing this wonderful, you know, supposedly unifying experience for the class. And it concerns me that we made these points a year ago that they said they would explore, you know, alter... But now they have explored alternative alternatives, but they now saying, well, we should, you know, get input from the parents and the students. Well, that should have been done a year ago. So I'm concerned about a good chunk of the students not being able to experience this because of the cost.
Thanks, thanks, Ms. Stats.
Along those lines, what happens to students who cannot join the trip? Where, do they sit in the classroom? Do they go to study hall?
Yeah, alternate plans are made for them. Of course, we welcome students in the school. Some students may not choose to go to school that day for a variety of reasons. But if a student comes to school, yes, alternate plans will be made for them.
I think it sounds like we have to, you know, if, you know, Jane brought it up. I remember the conversation. But I think we need to have this on an agenda at some point. I don't know if it starts in committee, but so we are not in the same position next year. I think we need to jump on it, like, October, November, wherever we need to be so we can really truly discuss it and get the parent input. But I did not realize the statistics were so high. I did not realize that 30% of the children cannot go. That is surprising, and definitely I feel a need for discussion.
Dr. Trabowski had made a presentation with both the history of the trip as well as the numbers over the years, as well as potential recommendations for some alternate solutions for this problem. So I think at this point, he made a first presentation. He's going to come back and make a secondary presentation on this.
When?
In the education committee.
Oh, in the education.
It's just, I think, for a lot of board members, it feels like this was brought up a year ago and no progress is made as far as here is regurgitating the information with some options.
Good to hear.
I would encourage the board to vote no or to table this trip. To echo what Ms. Stats has said, this was brought up over a year ago. At the time, the reasons that were listed, well, it was like, we don't have anything else that we can do. And actually, I remember at the time, I said I was conflicted about it because I do remember how nice the overnight trip was. However, looking at the statistics, when my older kids went, 90% of the students attended. To this past year, 71% of the students attending. It now becomes a haves and have-nots. And it does echo to me my concern that I brought up with the choir trips as well as the band trips. These are trips that go to Disney World to the tune of $1,700, which, by the way, was what my third and fourth quarter tax bill increased. So these are numbers that are quite significant for families to pay for the privilege of going to public school. So I'll be voting no on this Hershey trip. And it's not because I don't want the kids to experience a wonderful trip. I do want them to, but there are other ways that don't burden parents and families that really are making a choice between paying for essentials and then paying for this lovely trip.
Yeah, I think at this point, I mean, I think the counterargument to that is that there has been a lot of fundraising done for this trip already for this year. So just keep that in mind as you're voting.
That seems to be the case, what we, as it was brought up last year. So my point is, and everybody has their say, but if there's not a, if the board votes us through or does not table this, then there's really no incentive, in my view, to change because I've brought up the bands and the choir trips in the past, and there's really been no appetite to discuss it.
As opposed to voting it down entirely, if we table it, do we have time to discuss? Or are, you know, how, I know there's always a time crunch in terms of when deposits need to be in and things like that. So are we, I think it's a conversation that definitely needs to happen. Do we have the time to make time for it?
I honestly, I don't know the answer to that 100%, unfortunately. The one thing that I do want to say is I know it was brought up last year. And that's why, you know, we have taken the steps that we have taken. I just want to make it very clear, because I think some of that might... And board can vote however it wants to vote. We can do whatever. But we did have Dr. Trabowski provide a report to the education committee. We did go over the options and talk about things that he's looking at for the future. He is scheduled to come back to either next month. I don't think we've confirmed, it's October. He's coming back to the October meeting for further discussion about looking forward in the future. So I just want the public and the board to understand that I've heard the concerns. And yes, last year's trip went through. And since that time, we have been looking at what our other options are. That being said, the board can vote however it wants to. But Allison, I don't know the timing. I wish I had that information for you now. I don't have that.
Another question?
Ms. Stats?
I just want to also bring up, I know there's at least one other dance for the eighth graders or at least at the middle school. But there is a dance as part of this overnight trip that 30% of the students will not be able to participate in. Something that's touted as a wonderful experience, that's unique. They will not be experiencing this. And I, I just think it's, yes, yes, there have been, I wouldn't even say there, steps have been taken. There has been research done and presentation, but we have not moved forward. I don't think we've moved forward, especially if we can't, don't, we really have...
I respectfully disagree. We are moving forward.
I don't, I feel that we're sort of compelled to approve this because of the fundraising that's going on, et cetera, et cetera.
I just want to be very clear that I'm bringing the information to the committee as I get it. We share that information with everyone. And the board can vote however the board wants to vote. You can vote on this trip however you decide. I'm not trying to compel anybody or push anybody to do anything, and I will, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're compelling us, I'm just saying the circumstances.
Understood.
And also, another factor is, that has been brought up is, it can be disappointing to the students and the parents, especially when they've been expecting this to happen. But then again, if we do eventually do this, if they're the first one in years to not have this overnight trip, yes, it might be disappointing, but still go back to that 30% that don't experience it at all.
How do I know about making a motion to table it? Because I feel, like, hearing that statistic, I do have a problem with saying yes tonight. I don't have enough information fully. I didn't know, and if it was Mr. Trabowski that came to the education committee, maybe it was... I understand what Jane is saying, maybe it's a little later than we expected or wanted it to happen. For me, the fundraising can go to an alternative. So I don't think it's lost, or, I mean, we have until June, but...
So just to clarify, you know, so just to give you the sequence, last year, we had the full discussion with all the information Dr. Trabowski came to the meeting with. With this past meeting, the trip was again put on the agenda because it was presented that there was an expectation they would go to Hershey based on the fundraising. So in between last year and this year, nothing else was, there was no difference in the information that was available. This information was available last year. And again, whatever we talk about, I guess in October, the assumption is that's going forward on how to hopefully change the expense of the trip.
But I think the difference in this year is, was he actually presented, I think, three or four different options for next year, if the board did not want. So it was like, hey, here's what the plan is this year, and we now have three or four different options for next year if we choose not to go through with Hershey. So it was not just the same thing regurgitated. There was additional content on options, like going to, I forget the different place, Dorney Park for one day, Gaven Busters. So they had like options in lieu of this, but that was, the thought was, we've already done fundraising, so there's an expectation for the students who have fundraised, done fundraising, that they would go this year, before we set that expectation for next year that we could decide on a path forward.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that... My understanding would be then, obviously, last year's 7th graders had the impression that they were starting to fundraise for their Hershey trip.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. Have this year's 7th graders...
I don't believe so.
Been told that that is not necessarily a given?
That, what he expressed at the meeting was that they have not started fundraising for the trip yet. So they wanted to make, get our discussion points to set expectations appropriately.
And that's why Dr. Trabowski is coming in October to the education committee.
That's wonderful, and we certainly don't want disappointed students at all. But if there could be communication made, that, please understand, we're looking at that just to make sure the trip is a much more inclusive opportunity, you know, moving forward.
One of the reasons why Dr. Trabowski is coming to the education committee is... isn't just to present his ideas. When he is there, if the board has concerns, questions, things about communication, he needs to hear that from you. He might be watching this meeting right now, he might not be. I may intend to call him first thing tomorrow about this and then a fire alarm could go off in the school. So I want him in front of the board members so the board members can hear him and that he can also hear from the board members.
I guess my big concern and what would sway me right now is this is the first time that I'm hearing that 30% of kids did not go. I mean, I could have been asleep up here at some point.
It was last year.
I understand that, but I don't remember ever getting those statistics before tonight. I could be wrong. I will fully admit that I could be wrong, but I don't ever remember hearing that because I would have thought it was a problem.
They were in committee meeting minutes, I believe.
In the committee, but not to the full board.
Well, I mean, the full board has access to committee meetings, but yeah, it was not proactively sent out.
So I didn't read it correctly or I didn't look and say, I would have only known if I had read specifically the minutes.
Yes, looked at the minutes, yes.
So point of clarification, because I also didn't know, but I read the Education Committee minutes for this month, so was it only this month?
No, it was last.
It was last year. Last year was also mentioned?
I can find out when it was sent. We have been talking about this for some time. I'll try to hunt down the information for you.
No, that's okay. I mean, I just, but to Cindy's point, so.
I think the way the last meeting was left is that the committee was unhappy with the numbers and were happy that other options were presented and that we would think about it and come back. He would come back a couple of months later and have a further discussion on future planning of this. But they would not start fundraising for the next trip until this was figured out.
So I guess what's important then is to make sure that there is communication done well in advance to, especially regarding the idea of fundraising already starting, et cetera, et cetera, and/or not disappointing.
There's a potential change.
But at least the earlier you let them know, the better for them to adjust.
So some communication that we potentially will be adjusting the trip. It was not necessarily Hershey, but we'll come back to you with an answer.
I think was my point about hopefully that is communicated to the current seventh grade class that just came.
I guess I thought, I was hoping that was happening last year.
I would much prefer to table this until our next meeting and get more information than to vote it down. But if I have to vote tonight, like I don't feel comfortable saying that let's go forward with a trip where 30% of kids can't come. If I can come back next month or next meeting and know, hey, there's going to be a process in place this year, like maybe now, all 30% maybe aren't because of the affordability. Maybe some of them because families don't feel comfortable sending their kids overnight. They're young, there's other things. But if it is a financial issue, is there a fund that can be started where kids can apply? Like, I would like to hear some of those possibilities so we're not leaving out anybody because of financial burden.
And I think Dr. Trabowski spoke about that too in the committee meeting. If we have student, now it all comes down to perspective in a sliding scale. If we have students who can't afford, there are ways with our HSAs, with other funds, that we do try to make sure that those students go. Now, mostly that's when students are identified with free and reduced lunch, we try to take care of it. That being said, in the same way that I had problems with the pay-to-play policy and identifying that people who are just beyond that threshold, beyond the free and reduced lunch, they may still think that that's not in their financial situation to go. The problem with the 70% number, the 71% number is we don't drill down, as you had said with the people, hey, why aren't you going? And we don't want to put people off. So we had planned for Dr. Trabowski to come to the next Education Committee meeting. You guys can separate this out and do whatever you would like with it. We may have answers that you like after that meeting, we may have answers that you don't like. But either way, he is coming on the 14th to present, to answer more questions and to hear from you.
And just confirming, I did look in, it was the June 17th Committee Meeting for Education and the attachment of the explanation is attached to the agenda.
Thank you. What year was that?
2025, June 17th.
June 17th.
That was the last meeting we had with him on this.
No, but I thought it was just this last one I read.
No, 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 I said it was a couple of meetings ago. It was not this month.
But I read the education minutes, this.
There may have been additional discussion on that with the board members, but his presentation, his presentation was June 17th. He was in person for that and presented.
So I believe, Ms. Nurse, you were asking about, just procedurally about.
Yeah, if you want to make a motion to table, you can do so.
I am making a motion to table. Is our first meeting before October 16th, when Dr. Trabowski's? Does anybody have the calendar?
It's the second one.
The second meeting, which is October 27th. I motion that we table this vote until the second meeting of October, which is October 27th.
So can I ask to amend to, after we get to speak with him?
Yes.
That way, if we can make that sooner, we can just add it, make that the recommendation. So don't put a date on it.
Sure. I motion to table this conversation until we have had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Trabowski to find out more information.
Second.
All right. Any discussion before we vote on table?
Just a point of clarification, are we separating out just the eighth grade trip?
Eighth grade trip from 12.6.
Right, but keeping in the marching band.
Correct. That is the motion. All right, seeing no other comments, we'll take a roll on that.
Mr. Davis? Again, just to clarify, we're voting on the motion to table the question. Yes. Ms. Jackson? Ms. Craig? Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
No.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. All right, so is there any other discussion on the action agenda before we move to voting on the action agenda? Okay, seeing none. So 12.6 will be included, but will exclude the eighth grade trip. It'll just be marching band.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
I may yes with exception. I am a no on 12.10.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes for everything, but abstain for 12.2.
Mr. Heo?
Yes for everything and it's standing on 12.3.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of human resources, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions: resignations, appointments, leaves of absence, revised bus drivers and bus eight hours, sixth and seventh period coverage, co-curricular and intramural advisors, student teachers, buddy, extra coverage, group changes, an HEA sidebar agreement, an HEA unfair practice charge settlement agreement, four unbudgeted instructional assistant positions due to special education needs, the suspension of a district employee and the suspension of a second district employee.
Can I get a motion in a second? Any discussion by the board? Ms. Stats?
It's not really discussion, but it's item 13.6, included in that list of co-curricular, intramural advisors. There's quite a few volunteers and I just really appreciate all the time that the volunteers put into, to help our students.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. In the area of operations, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions: monthly bills, the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment. One I'd like to specifically point out, the motion to name the Hillsborough High School basketball court after Ian Progen, be called Ian Progen Court. Settlement agreement, second settlement agreement, out of district placements for the 25-26 school year, accepting a donation and approving a tuition contract for the state responsible student for the 25-26 school year.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
I'd like to take a moment to just thank the board for honoring a truly remarkable human being that we lost last year and didn't think I'd get emotional for naming the court after Ian Progen. Thank you very much for that. In the area of policies and regulations, you can clap. In the area of policies and regulations, I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following: approving policy 2422 and 5339 is reviewed by the Education Committee for first reading. Approving policy is reviewed by the Operations Committee for first reading and abolishing policy 1648 as reviewed by the Education Committee for first reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be two, 30-minute periods of time. During meetings, open for public comment. Where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern of the residents of the school district as per law 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. This is, anybody can comment on anything at this point. There's three minutes and name and address and then you can begin.
Like form dress?
No, no, I mean, just.
Like just my general?
Yeah.
Elizabeth Arroza Flag Sound. And I just wanted to talk about redistricting a little bit. First of all, thank you for everything. It seems like a very tedious job to do. So we really appreciate that. And I want to say this, out of all of my education, higher education, I brag most about my years at Woodford. I was a Woodford Elementary student and there's pride in the elementary schools. And I'm nervous that if you break up the elementary school and these children have to go to five different schools, you lose that community, that sense of value. This year, my son went to kindergarten. He got on the bus with his neighborhood kid. The older kids helped him on that bus. His cousins happened to be on the same bus. They guided him to his classroom. There's a beauty within the community when you have a nice age gap from kindergarten to fourth grade. Now, speaking as a parent, breaking that up and having two bus stops in the morning for my next child who's going to be in kindergarten or my one that might be moved to a fourth grade class, it's a lot to juggle on the parents in the community. That's two bus pickups, two bus drop-offs. Most parents are working families and that's a lot to put on them. Also, I have a concern about joining an HEA, right? How do you pick if you have multiple children? Now you have to pay the fees in, let's just say, triangle, right? If we went to kindergarten, triangle, Woodford, if you have Eris and stuff like that. Those are the concerns that we're seeing. We're losing that nice community schools. And I know Woodford is the smallest class sizes, but there's a pride in our elementary schools. And I feel that by breaking it up, you really lose it. There's roots in the communities and, I just have a few notes that I'm just going to go on. And I think it's really important that the younger kids have the older kids to be there. And it's a lot of stress on parents to have multiple schools, different pickups and all of that. So that was just my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Shawna Radzio and I am over here for as a Sunny Need parent, new Sunny Need parent. I'm, so Liz and I obviously know each other. I'm a little, in a different sense than she is, coming from, you know, the teacher aspect versus the non-teacher aspect. I just had a son who joins kindergarten this year. He is at Sunny Need. We love it. I do agree that I am glad I'm not in your shoes making the entire decision because it just, yeah, it seems like it sucks all the way around. But it's difficult. I'm torn. There is a part of me that thinks the idea of all the kindergartners being together, I can see why that idea has merit. Like, I have a child who is a little difficult with some transitions and going to kindergarten was very big in all of these big kids. So I can see the merit in that of wanting those kids to be just in a school to get acclimated, just the kindergartners altogether, maybe get a little bit more personal, you know, one-on-one. But my flip side, again, which I have another little one too, who will be coming up into kindergarten in just a few years and how is he not going to go with his brother? And now, why want to be on the bus with my brother and whatnot? So I guess my other point is, from the preliminary maps, I'm probably going to be one of the ones affected by a shift in that. And that sucks because I really like where we are. I'm getting in with the HEA and to have to start all of that over next year is upsetting. So I guess my only comment on that is, if that map is, well, I know I probably can't answer this question, but if that map, where those lines are, is that like final where those lines are? Because I guess even though maybe a decision won't be made until spring break of which option you're going to go with, having that map even be semifinal and clear and available would at least give me a little bit of peace in knowing, okay, well, if this change comes and these lines look like this, okay. We're at Sunny Need right now. That means where this line is, I know I'm going to be going to Amsterdam. I can start meeting people over there and finding out more about that school as opposed to going, there's six elementary schools. I have no idea where I'm going to be and not knowing, you know, all of that. So even if the decision isn't made yet, if the lines are drawn and the map is available, having that out to the parents and on the website or wherever it is that we can access it, again, I think would ease some of my anxiety over, again, being one of the ones who's likely going to be affected by this. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Tyje Joyner. Our address, Ernest Drive, Hillsborough. So just a few things. My husband and I, we have six kids, right? So we've had a college student, a high schooler, elementary school, middle school, all at one time. It's hard. But you do all of that to say, kids are resilient and they figure it out. It's us who have more of the issues than everybody else. It's hard. It's hard. Like, it's just, none of it is easy. I know we, I'm asking a question. I know I may not get an answer, but the pre-K situation, I knew kindergarten was going to be mandated, but is pre-K also going to be mandated? Because then why are we trying to find somewhere to put the pre-K students? Like, why don't we leave the pre-K students where they are? Because then if we add the pre-K students to the kindergarten school, then it becomes full. So we should just leave them where they are, right? Kind of like, maybe K in one or just kindergarten, maybe. So, I know some of you may not like this. I'm a five-year, I'm a five-year Hillsborough person, right, a New York City transfer. So New York City is a little different, clearly. But you guys have a lot of schools. We don't really have, we didn't have that many schools there. So four, five and six is my suggestion. It works really well. We have seven to 26, so been through the school system quite a bit. That was like one and two. And then I heard you say about hiring 17 staff members for kindergarten, but if we have all of the half-day kindergarten teachers, wouldn't they then become permanent teachers? Again, a question, inquiry. Why would we have to hire new teachers if we have all these half-day teachers? I know we had a great. I know we had a great HES kindergarten teacher for our seven-year-old, and she really wanted to be permanent and, and a full-day teacher, but that wasn't in her situation, so. And, my last comment, I heard you about the budgets and the, we can't take another increase. Our taxes are like getting out of control. It was one of the reasons we moved here, is because taxes hadn't gone up in a really long time. Since we've moved here, taxes have gone up like every year, and it's, it's stressful. Understanding the deficit possibilities year by year, taking a break, I think this, board member said it, like, taking a break may or may not break us, but it's worth going to the next year to find out, because it's breaking some of us, like months. So we have to figure it out quarter by quarter, where the board has to figure it out year by year. So just take that into consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
I never come to A's meetings, but I'm going to put it on the record in front of everybody. I'm gender fluid, to make sure you all know what that means. You look it up. But I did receive a letter, I don't know where it came from, use of facilities, all students are told to have access to the restroom, blah, blah. So with all the money that we have, we can't make a, and I'm not even specifying transgender, could be gay, whatever it may be. Why, with all the money we do have, and especially the amount of bathrooms we have that you explained before, why can't we just put a gender-neutral bedroom so that people could change in there that my 16-year-old daughter doesn't have to worry about? Because 90% of you is all married, you probably got daughters, you got wives, you're all married and you're women, but if I just claim in front of the world that I'm gender fluid, and I happen to see any of you ladies out, or your wives out, and I feel at that moment I'm a woman, I walk in behind them, I just want you to know how my daughter feels at this point. So I made it public, I'm gender fluid, and I have enough money to play games with you guys, so I suggest you just make it simple. I'm not saying that they don't have the right to exist, anybody, everybody has the right to exist, but we can accommodate, my daughter should not feel, or anybody else's daughter that doesn't have the guts to come up here and talk about it, be able to feel safe in general, because you can use this gender-fluid thing, and a gentleman can go into the bathroom, a young man, doesn't matter what age it is, and identify, and you can't tell me any different, because I just told you right now, I am gender fluid. So, you're married, you're married, you're married, would you mind me walking into the bathroom while you're in the restaurant? Because I'll remember the faces, and I'll remember the wives when I see them. Would you be upset if I walked in because I felt that way that day? All I'm saying is, I accept everybody. We can make this real easy, just like you have a TD Bank happens to be, Bank I use, it doesn't say transgender, and I don't want to specify, gender-neutral. Men and women should not be in the same bathrooms changing, or in locker rooms changing. They shouldn't be in women's sports anyway, but I don't care, that's a different story. But the changing, that bothers me. So I need to make sure that you, all the tax money, all the warehouses that I pay tax on, my houses I pay tax on, $9 million is nothing compared to what I could put this board through, make a suggestion of gender-neutral and a separate place for everybody to be safe, not just the four or five, I don't know how many students I have that claim that, doesn't really matter to me. We've got to accommodate everybody, though. So if you can't accommodate everybody, and it comes to a point, I have to sue you, or I have to embarrass you when you're at dinner, I will make that my objective. So I suggest that you come up with a better thing than having my daughter walk in, or anybody's daughter for that matter, or son, vice versa, it doesn't matter, feel more comfortable in the school. They're supposed to be safe. I moved from Orange, New Jersey, up here to feel safe, and I'm not feeling safe, neither is my daughter, or anybody else's kid that doesn't want to come up here and front you guys. I know you can't answer it, because it's a dumb question, you look stupid up there, but if I see yous out, I, I told everybody I'm gender fluid, so if I follow your wife into the bathroom, or you into the bathroom, you can't sue me. But I'll make you feel uncomfortable, just like my daughter feels uncomfortable. So just make the, very simple, no? Gender-neutral, that's it. Go ahead.
Thank you for your comments. Please, no comments from the, from the crowd. Thank you.
Leisha Gabrielis again, still live in Hillsboro. Let's see, so I have a couple of different things to go over. So with the 8th grade trip, it's my understanding, so if next year, if you wanted to bring this up and have it voted on in like June or July, that would probably be easier, although I think it's going to be finalized to this year. So last year, I think that the vote might have been around the same time, which was after back-to-school night. This year, I believe that Dr. T has already told the incoming 7th graders, or the current 7th graders, that your trips are going to look different. But the 8th graders already think that they are going to be going on Hershey, so just letting you know that, but I'm sure Dr. T will explain that to you, too. So, thank you for sharing on the, how many kids are coming in, that went from like 66 to 71, so it's like a 7.6% increase. We don't know if that's going to be the same going forward, but it was nice to see what was expected and what actually happened. Just letting you know that Triangle, in case you aren't familiar, they created a playground that has a nice enclosed, larger playground for special needs, would probably be great for the younger kids. For line of sight, I remember that a town up north, an hour, an hour north, they were able to get waivers for line of sight for the bathrooms, and I just wrote my friend, and she's like, oh my gosh, we got that done like 10 to 15 years ago. Like, what's up with you guys? And now they're getting grants for pre-K, but, you know, it's better late than ever. Let's see, so also, in case you haven't heard, in the past, at least one Board of Ed member had suggested if we ever got a new high school, that we could have K through 2, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12 schools, which is the same number of schools that we have now, just FYI. So also with that is, I know that we had raised all of the taxes recently, and if the state would allow us, if we're not using the non-recurring dollars for, for much, if we could possibly like bank that and save it to put it down as a down payment for a new high school at some point, that would be nice. So if the state isn't allowing you to keep more money aside, and we have that money, that we're not using it for anything, that would be something to look into. Local fair share, it'd be lovely if the state could actually tell us what our local fair share is ahead of time, so you sort of know what's going on. Same thing with state aid. I know that last year, we had the discussions with the state, saying like, these are some things that we would like, and so maybe if they listen, then maybe that would help us. Shopping around for different healthcare. My husband's company is, is changing, so I, I think that at one point, we had changed the, to the state's model in order to save money. I think that's where we are now, but, you know, if you can provide a good package at a lower cost, that's always great. I think that might be about it.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no others, that would close public comment, and I'll open up to any board members if they'd like to make comment before we close the meeting.
I don't know if I owe Leisha an explanation, but the books that I voted no on. So, for the social studies, I understand the intent, I understand the need, but there are two sections in there that I found questionable, and I thought required more conversation. One of the sections was on January 6th and elections, and I think it was premature to write anything in the book, and I actually found the passage biased. I didn't think, I think it presented one perspective, and didn't necessarily open up the content for discussion. So that, that was one, that was the takeaway. The other, the other issue for me was there was a section called "Student Activism With Respect to Voting," and the content in there had to do with students 16 and 17 voting on Board of Ed elections. In California, I think they were trying to push for more, more elective, more local government members. I know we gave the floor to the former student delegate to give her presentation. I know she went to the town. We never had any conversation after that. And I think relative to what happened with the tax increase, I think it's a very raw situation. We haven't had any conversation on it, and I think one of the, one of the glaring things about this is that while a student feels they have the right to talk, speak on behalf of their, the content they learn, they don't necessarily understand the financial burden of the property taxes, nor do they understand the damage that the state has done. And I think it does a disservice to taxpayers in this community not to have more conversation on it, but then to put a section of this book out there for potential conversation, where parents are not there, other stakeholders are not there. So that's my biggest concern, is these two sections are open for discussion, they're open for discussion in limited fashion, and these are, these are discussions that should be had at, at the dining room table as well. I mean, parents should be fully engaged in this content. I have the same feeling about the other books, you know, from the literacy perspective, I have no question about, or no issue with the concept that you're working with, you know. I found the Monster book for a 9th grader without the ability to see comparatively what other books are offered, and I know, I guess it's a lot of work. I know different teachers prefer different options, but there's nothing to compare it to. The American like me, I found some of the passages were a bit harsh, and I, you know, some of the passages had a lot of self-deprecating humor, and I just don't know if that's the right way to talk about some of these issues. So I think part of this for me is, and we can take this to the Education Committee, is talk about syllabus, and how teachers present what they're doing, what the optional books are, because I know we had this conversation a couple of years ago, I had, I know, an Education Committee with Dr. Feltry, and at that time, syllabus were used. So I think what I would like to see, I'd like to see a little more conversation about these books, a little more time, you know, before they get voted on. Because I, I think, you know, we're touted as one of the most diverse states in the country, and I think sometimes I, I worry that we're losing sight of who we're not including anymore, and, or how we're presenting certain information. We're losing maybe a sensitivity we should still have. And, but again, going back to the social studies, I don't think it was wise in an updated book to put those two subjects, because they are new, they are limited, and, and again, with January 6th, it's a controversial issue, it's a complex issue. That's what I noted in my comments, and I just think it's too complex to open up for discussion, especially when it's a one-sided presentation of the content.
Thank you for comments.
I do have one more.
Sure.
And thank you for clarifying, Section 8 in the agenda was about the documents that parents are reminded of reviewing, and maybe to this gentleman's point, I think we should add Policy 5756, so that parents are aware of what the expectation is of them and their children, as far as how, what's been approved here prior to this board, maybe? Some people were here, I don't know. But it, it was a, it was a social media issue, and I know we had the conversation about what was going around social media, and I think out of fairness to everyone, the policy should be socialized, and the accommodation should also be socialized, so that students understand what their rights are and, and where their safe spaces are. Thank you.
The board members, Ms. Stats?
I just want to say that I, I attended the RoboCon, I was at Ridgewater Mall Saturday and Sunday, and there were several school districts that participated, including Hillsboro, and there are all these different activities going on, and demonstrations, they were demonstrating what the robots they created last year, going through different scenarios, and the president of the Robo Raiders, Vicky, she gave me a wonderful tour, very, very well-informed, very interesting, and it's amazing what our students, not only what they're learning, what they're able to convey and communicate to people of all ages. There were a lot of young children, I mean, the, the parking lot was packed, it's a hard fight a parking spot, but, but, you know, older people as well, it was very interesting, and I applaud our, our students for being part of that.
Thank you. Comment? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Hugh?
Will.
All right, I'll go. Mine's quick. I just have a question. So we talked about the next board meetings, we're having two in October, October 13th and October 27th, and just confirming that we're having the board retreat on the Tuesday after the first board meeting, October 14th. And is the agenda available?
Is the agenda available for the board retreat?
Yes.
I believe Monica just finished speaking to the rest of the board members. I don't, I don't know if she has.
Okay, no, no, I was just, I was, I just wanted to make sure, because it was like back-to-back, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm kind of bouncing off Ms. Jackson's comments. I'm not on the Ed Committee, and so I don't get to preview the books like she had, but I'm interested in hearing that the January 6th incident is included in a class textbook. Partly, I mean, it is contemporary, but it's also still unfolding. Just in the news last week, the FBI has just identified that there are 275 FBI agents at the January 6th event in plain clothes, and that's currently being investigated, people are unraveling that. So I'd be very interested, if I were teaching the class that had that section in the textbook, I'd like to make sure that I'm folding into the content what's unfolding before us on the evening news, and it's, you know, it's something about which to be concerned.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stats?
And I, to your point, I mean, I think it's okay to include that if it's recent, but, you know, as long as we continue to, you know, address whatever is new information or newer information.
Yeah.
But, you know, the recent, something that's a recent event, it's still part of history, and yes, it is complex, but I believe this is an AP course, so we do have the higher standards of them being able to address the complexity of issues.
Sure.
And there's a lot of older occurrences that are quite complex as well, that we expect them to arise to address.
Thank you.
May I?
Jackson, go ahead.
The primary concern is that the way it's written is one-sided, and so without the guarantee that multiple aspects of January 6th are going to be discussed, there's no, there's no guarantee that a robust conversation is going to be had. And I think, I think first and foremost, the responsibility of having done the right thing should have been on the author of the book, and it is premature, again, based on recent events, not to go into it, not to take a side. The story is still unfolding, it's not complete, and so you risk not having that robust conversation. And, you know, you could always, you know, it's fair to say you should have it in the classroom, but there's no guarantees, and that's the biggest, biggest risk there as well.
Thank you.
Yes, there is no guarantee, but we have well-qualified teachers that, I, I have been on the stage of working on, you know, the sets of the plays, and sometimes they'll be, they'll bring their class or classes into there to have different classes discuss certain topics, you know, serious topics like abortion or whatever, and there's, there's quite a variety of different points of view, and, and I, I trust the teachers with their professionalism and their backgrounds and their, their education, that they make sure that happens, and I think they, they encourage that, and it's, it creates at least a more interesting discussion when in fact you do address all the different perspectives.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Well, I guess the topic is over now, but not, if anyone wanted to bring it up again, feel free, but I just wanted to say a couple of good things that are happening in the high school right now, because I guess that's really my job. So I just wanted to comment on the new, like, pass system that we have going on, it's called Securely, for anyone that doesn't know. It's a, like, it's technology-based, so we kind of just sign out using our teachers' names, then we sign in to wherever we have to go. It's, we can go to like the bathroom, or the library, and then another teacher's room, but it's working really well. but it's working really well. There were a couple of bumps in the road in the beginning, but we've kind of gotten the hang of it, so that's a positive thing. I'm not sure if it was discussed at the board meetings last year, but just wanted to let everyone know that that's going good. Also, with AI usage, someone made, someone mentioned it before, but we're trying to look at it, um, as more of a tool, not as a threat. Like, in my marketing class specifically, she was saying we could use it, um, for, for research. So, I don't know who'd mentioned AI before, but we're trying to make that more of a, like a friend, not a foe, that's it. Um, also, we, you mentioned the Robo, RoboCon, that was something successful. Mr. Delolo went to that and I talked to a couple of my friends who also attended and they said they had a great time and applause to the, um, robotics team. We also had a successful club fair. Um, I talked to a couple of the freshmen that I know and they had a lot of fun engaging with the different clubs. So, um, the school community is going, as far as I know, it's, um, working pretty well so far. The last thing, we're also having a pep rally next Friday, I'm very excited about that. I've been working with the student council and I've been talking to Mr. Delolo, we're excited to, um, make it a fun event, include everyone that we can. So, that's kind of the good information from the high school as the year has been progressing.
Thank you, Ms. Maturi.
Thank you.
Uh, the only thing I would say for the people who had questions about, uh, full-day kindergarten and redistricting, please remember, and we'll get this out in Hillsboro Happenings, we're going to have three times where you can engage with members of the administration. Uh, board members can come too, but we can't have five of you come to any of those things, otherwise it's a, it's a board meeting. Uh, and that will be a time and a place where you can ask the hyper-specific questions and we can answer those questions for you. So, please be on the lookout for that.
That information is on the presentation that's shared. Ms. Datz?
You mentioning the redistricting, just, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up earlier, but, but I appreciate the point of view from the parents because I didn't think about, you know, you have kids going to, you know, if we do that, that, uh, one kindergarten school, um, so you have to put a kid on the bus for kindergarten, another kid on, uh, to another school, um, so that's a hardship for the parents, not to mention like, you know, now you can't have the older kid, you know, helping along the younger kid. So, that's an, uh, another perspective that I appreciate.
Not a simple issue. All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.